Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our February 20th council meeting and call this meeting to order. And just before we start, I would like to remind council and staff to please speak directly into the mic so when we go to hear this or when it's taped, we can hear the conversation. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Loosley.
Present.
And we have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And at this time, I'd like you to read the land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral lands of the Chipewa, the Ottawa, and the Pototami peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bagh. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Tract Treaty Number 29 of 1827, and we express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with this land and the indigenous peoples who've called this land home.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a move and a second to adopt the agenda before you.
And, your worship, there is a slight amendment to the agenda.
Go ahead, Mrs. Pearson.
Thank you. We seem to have had a glitch, and one of the bylaws did not come through. There is a bylaw tonight, which is 322 Eureka Street, which is the zoning bylaw amendment. It was circulated to council as well, but it is now on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. So I'll ask for a move and a second to adopt the agenda. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by, sorry, Counselor Hyatt. Any discussion regarding the agenda before you? If not, all those in favor, opposed, that carries. Moving on, we have a couple sets of minutes. The first sets of minutes is the regular council meeting held on February the 5th. I'll ask for a move and a second to put those minutes on. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on February 5th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions, errors, or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. We also have before you the minutes of a meeting held on February the 5th, 2024 regarding the rezoning amendment for 322 Eureka Street. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the public meeting held for the zoning bylaw amendment for 322 Eureka Street dated February the 5th, 2024.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding those minutes before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll bring us to a moment of reflection. I'll please ask everyone to stand. Please be seated. That'll take us to the council roundtable announcements. And tonight, we start with Counselor Welsh, please.
Just a report on the Heritage Open House for Family Day Weekend. There were a million things going on that weekend, but I'm happy to say we had about 217 attendees and about 35 presenters in total, and we consider that a good, a successful day.
That was great news. Thank you, Counselor Welsh. Deputy Mayor Field.
Thank you, your worship. I also attended a number of the events on the weekend. I feel more like I ate at every event on the weekend. I think we can't have any celebrations without food, which were great. But it was really, it was great to see so many people at the community center, at the Y, at all the events, at the breakfast, lunches. I think I did eat dinner at home once on the weekend. Just congratulations to all the staff and all the volunteers and all the organizations. I don't even want to attempt to list them all. There's so many people that were involved in doing this for Family Day, so just a great weekend in Petrolia.
Certainly was. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That'll move us on to Counselor Clark, please.
Nothing that hasn't already been said.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hyatt.
Nothing to share either, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Patel.
On the roll. Z, O, T, W, and everyone, say congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara. Just a ditto. I don't hear that word very often. Thank you. I have a few items. I attended a meeting of the Lampton County Council on Wednesday, February the 7th, and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended an executive meeting of the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority in Strathroy on Thursday, February the 8th, 2024, and will also keep council informed. I presented a certificate and extended congratulations on behalf of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to Mrs. Jean Windover on the occasion of her 80th birthday on February the 10th, 2024. I attended a meeting of the Health and Wellness Committee on February the 12th at Victoria Hall. This was a very good and constructive meeting. I attended the Township of Warwick Journey Through Time film premiered by Paul James at the Warwick Community Center on Saturday, February the 17th. The project was funded through the Lampton Creative County Grant Program, which I chair, and the Township of Warwick. It was a great film, enjoyed by all, and money well spent. And as Deputy Mayor Field stated, I'm going to try and hit just about everyone if I can. Congratulations to the Town of Petrolia staff, volunteers, 150 Committee, YMCA, Heritage Committee, Legion Branch 216, service clubs, New Life Assembly, and all those that donated and contributed to make Petrolia Family Fun Day a great success. That's all I have. I will move us on to the different committee minutes. First, we have the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, and the counselors are Counselor Patel and Counselor Clark, who sit on that. I think Counselor Clark, would you like to take that lead? I believe Counselor Patel was absent, so.
Certainly, your worship. Most of the discussion is covered fairly well in the minutes. There was, the Town of Petrolia has enrolled in the June 2024 Community Challenge, so their town staff and council is encouraged to get involved in participation events. I believe there's a walk with the mayor/deputy mayor arranged. The deputy mayor seems a little surprised by that.
Right.
And maybe you want to speak to that, being as it's involving you, but most of what happened or what was covered is covered very well in the minutes.
Thank you. And just to speak to that briefly, we did start that, I think it was last year or a couple years ago?
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. We had a little walkathon with everyone on a Tuesday, which I thought was still kind of a fun night, and we're looking at doing it again, I believe, end of May, early June, starting at 6:00 on a Tuesday night. Is there anything else, Deb, you'd like to add? Go ahead.
Yes, through you, your worship. Just on a note that may be repeated from the conversation you had at the meeting, but the Youth Advisory Committee also at our last meeting has shared a great interest in being part of this participation, and you might see a future challenge coming from them to the other committees, so stay tuned and get your running shoes ready.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Patel. That'll be fun. All right, we do have a set of minutes. I'll need a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt, and I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee meeting held on February the 12th, 2024.
Any errors or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll move us to the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Welsh and Deputy Mayor Joel Field on that. Which one of you two would like to take the lead on that? Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
The bulk of the meeting, as usual, was taken up with talk of cemeteries and the planning of our open house, so we are well on our way to having the Hillsdale Cemetery tour planned and events and other things for the North Street Cemetery.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Field, do you have anything to add?
I think she covered it up.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do have a motion with the minutes on the floor. I'll need a move and a second to put that on for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Petrolia Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held on February 7th, 2024.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. On that, we have Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead? Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Ken, thank you. So initial meeting for Parks and Rec for 2024, kicking off, you know, kind of all the standard events that happen on a yearly basis. We had heard a delegation from Petrolia Pickleball Club looking at, to ensure that as part of the backyard project or the community recreation project at the YMCA, that there's some potential availability for pickleball courts at said facility. We did have one member, one youth member of the Parks and Rec Committee resign due to obligations, so we accepted resignation from that. And the Parks and Rec Committee did support the outdoor library project that was presented by Ava Horwood in December with the recommendation that it be placed on the north side of the arena. We believe there's a bench just out front of the arena, so we would look for some support, maybe from staff, to talk with the fair board to see if it's appropriate to locate said library in that position.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt. Counselor Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think he pretty much covered it.
Okay, thank you. We do have a motion. I'll need a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse as presented minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held on February 7th, 2024.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us to the Municipal Services and Traffic Committee. The, it's Counselor Hyatt that's on that. You can see on there, there's a couple reports council's reviewed, but I will turn it over to you, Counselor Hyatt, for your review.
Yeah, so apart from the minutes that are presented there on some building reports, just a few other items that are going on around town, compost passes are starting on March 1st. This year, again, they will also extend the backyard composters availability, similar to what was done last year. The wastewater treatment and sewer and water treatment plant reports will be available for March review for council. Lastly, Tank Street bids and tender went out this week to be, to be closed maybe by April.
Good. Thank you for that verbal report. That's great. The, as far as the different monthly report and billing permits, we certainly hope that improves this year. But there's a motion on the floor. Would Counselor Hyatt, would you like to move that be approved? I'll need a second, please. Seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Counselor Hyatt's update on municipal service happenings in the 2023 year-end building permits and January 2024 building permit reports as circulated.
Any discussion regarding that motion before you? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to planning and development, and we have Counselor Welsh, please. Go ahead. I think, yeah, Deputy Mayor was not present.
Oh, he was not present.
Yeah.
So, yes, that's right. So we did meet with a developer looking to do some things down in the east part of Petrolia, and with all the planners and all the necessary people were there, and some progress was made, and some back steps were made, and some more work is to be done yet.
That's good news. Thank you.
But, long and short.
All right, we have, I believe, a motion on the floor. Would you move that? Counselor Welsh? Thank you. I need a second, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file Counselor Welsh's update on planning and development happenings.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That takes us on to Number 10 Correspondence for Information. We have A to F. I would like to just take out C in regards to the Sarnia Mayor Mike Bradley letter of support regarding Lampton College. I like to deal with that separate. So I'd like to go from A to F, except for the portion of C regarding Mayor Mike Bradley. So I'll need a move and a second to deal with those items. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Clark, and I'll get, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file correspondence items 10A through F, excluding the correspondence received by Mayor Mike Bradley.
Any discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us to the request from Sarnia Mayor Mike Bradley. I just wanted to bring it to council's information to see if you'd like to deal with that and how you would like to deal with that. So I'm open for any move or a second if you want to approve that. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark, and that motion is to support. Okay, thank you. Any discussion regarding that motion before you? And that motion basically is to support that. I will ask the clerk to try and read that, if you can put that together, please. Mrs. Pearson?
And that would be that the correspondence received by Mayor Mike Bradley be supported by the council of the town of Petrolia?
Thank you. Any discussion regarding that motion? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to Correspondence for Consideration Motion. There are none tonight. Delegations, presentations, we have none. Community announcements and recognitions and awards. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive as information the February 20th, 2024, community announcements as presented.
Thank you. It's a busy town. Ms. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, to Counselor Hyatt.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we could get the youth talent showcase on March 1st included in the list of events.
I think that can be done. Is that, is that okay, Ms. Smith?
I'm sure we can do that. I will pass that along to Larissa.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Did we read that motion?
We did.
Okay, so I'm just sad that we did have that motion read. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll move us on now to the first opportunity for the public to address council, and we have Mr. Diten to come forward. I know your agenda stated Mr. Blackmore would be addressing council, someone would represent him. I'll ask Mr. Diten to come forward, and I will state, Mr. Diten, I did hand out the copies that you had. I believe all of council's had a chance to read that.
Good.
But I'll turn the floor over to you.
Well, I'm not going to read all of this because there's a copy out to it. It's a, Terry Blackmore asked me to step in for him because council had asked him to put something together on all of those motions that he was trying to talk about on February 6th, I think it was. So I put it all together by a text from Terry and some input from myself. The only one that I really think we, I would like to talk about, and it goes down, and Terry didn't do this, it's the band shell, and I got a question or two on it, which the band shell was started by the town and $200,000 was put in. It's my understanding the town went out for bids, and they only received one bid, from what I understand, somewhere in a neighborhood over $400,000. I guess the question I've got is something of that value, is it a sole source bid, or were there other bidders in this fracas? And if so, what were the, what were the other bidders? What did they, what did they actually bid on? You don't have to answer all of it, but I'm.
Well, I'd like to try and, and it's, first of all, my understanding, and I can certainly ask, be corrected if I'm wrong, but my intent is certainly not sole. We open it up for anyone and everyone when we tender, for anyone to apply. We don't pick and choose contractors to do the work.
Well, and I guess my question, in my background of this information that I go through for the last 50 years, has been you put a list of contractors together, you put it out to them, and then you either get them, their bids back, or they decline. I don't know what we do here. Sounds like we just put it out on the street and see who comes back with a bid on it.
I'll ask, Mr. Thompson, can you speak to that at all, as far as?
I wasn't involved with that project, but that project did go on bids and tenders, and maybe Mr. Charlotte Ball can comment, but.
Okay.
That probably, as per directive by council, we use bids and tenders, and it went on bids and tenders.
Mr. Charlotte Ball, can you speak to that, please?
Through you, your worship. That's exactly what happened. We got one bid back, came to council, explained all that. It went out to the world, if you will, got the one bid, and then, and this is our legacy project for the 150th.
Right.
So, and Mr. Diten was talking about is, it's another way of doing bids, is by invitation, figuring out who out there you want to invite, although making it opens the much more fair way to do it. We only do bids by invitation of something very specialized, like the water intake.
That was on October 12th, just before it returned to council.
Okay. All right, I'll go to Counselor Welsh first, and then Deputy Mayor Field next.
I actually have the report up here in front of me. So as part of the open bid process issued, this is word for word by the town, a total of 10 plan takers registered for the work. At the time of closing, the following results were recorded by the town. One bidder canceled due to the present workload. Two bids were received and deemed incomplete. Six plan takers did not submit a bid, and one complete bid was received.
Okay, so there was a list went out for the bids, and that was my question, because I couldn't seem to find that anywhere, and that's what I was really looking for.
Open, too? Was it just invitation?
No, through you, worship, yeah, it was, it was totally open, like Counselor Welsh read, so there were 10 company, potential companies that bought the bid documentation, and was it three?
One bidder canceled due to the present workload. Two bids were received and were not complete. Six plan takers didn't submit a bid, and one complete bid was received.
But it was open to anyone and everyone.
That was, I just heard that. Yeah, that's right. Okay. So that, going on forward, now, do we have, is this a hard dollar contract, or is this a open process? Like, is it going to continue to rise up as we go?
It was awarded.
Or are they held to an accountable, here's your bid?
Mrs. Pearson, can you speak to that?
Yes, certainly. Going back to the minutes of October 12th, 2023, the motion that was passed by council was that the council of the town of Petrolia endorsed the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities, and the Director of Marketing Arts and Communication regarding the tender results for the Petrolia 150 Legacy Band Shell for Victoria Park, and that council award the contract to West Hook Construction in Chatham in the amount of $438,979 plus H, or yes, plus HST, and that careful demolition should proceed for the current band shell, and that used building materials be noted, donated to Petrolia Discovery Foundation, and the Petrolia 150 Committee shall proceed with fundraising.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson.
Okay, so it is a hard dollar contract?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Not a cost-plus kind of thing, so it won't go up from where we're at now.
Oh, Mr. Charlotte Ball, would you like to add to that, please?
Certainly. So I've been here 11 years. I've never seen us once do a, what we call a cost-plus. That was big in the 80s and 90s. The problem with cost-plus, if you pick me as your bidder, then I'm motivated to spend as much as I can because I'm going to get my cost plus more money. That hasn't been.
I know the concept very well.
Yeah, yeah, so that, we don't, we don't use that for that.
That was my question, and you've answered it.
Yes.
Okay, great. Then I'll go ahead and sit down and let you guys, you've got this for Terry, so he can answer any questions.
Just before you go, I will ask council, do you have any questions for Mr. Diten while he's here? If not, Mr. Diten, thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered, Mrs. Pearson?
I have no one else registered, your worship.
Okay, I'll go to the general public. Anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have a, a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the Petrolia Line and Oil Heritage Road Water Main Replacement and Extension Dash Engineering Services. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the Director of Operations dated February 20th, 2024, regarding the Petrolia Line and Oil Heritage Road Water Main Replacement and Extension Engineering Services, and that BM Ross be approved to proceed with the civil engineering services in relation to the Petrolia Line and Oil Heritage Road Water Main Replacement and Extension in the amount of $143,800 plus HST.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions from council? Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
I'm just wondering through you, is there any other work planned while the road is opened up or needed or required?
Mr. Thompson, can you speak to that, please?
Through you, worship, just the water main, no other work.
That okay? All right, any other questions from council? Okay, if not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. And we also have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the 2024 sidewalk replacement update. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the Director of Operations dated February 20th, 2024, regarding the 2024 sidewalk replacement works, and that BM Ross be approved to proceed with the civil engineering services in relation to the Garfield Maple Street connectivity in the amount of $26,950 plus HST.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson, and that is good news. I'm pleased to see action being taken on our sidewalks. Any discussion from council? Go ahead, Counselor Hyatt.
Thank you, through you. In the proposal, it talks about the northeast corner of Petrolia Line and Oil Heritage Road, which I don't think we're planning on doing.
No, through you, worship, that's correct, Counselor Hyatt. If this water main goes through, obviously, it's got to go on the north side of Petrolia Line out by 21 Shell, so yes, we won't be doing that at this time.
I just want to make sure we're not going to pay for that expense of doing that.
That's good. It's all, thank you, Counselor Hyatt. Any other questions from council? Counselor O'Hara?
It seems like a lot of money, just an engineer a sidewalk. Does it have to be engineered? We couldn't just?
Counselor, oh, sorry, Mr. Thompson, would you like to speak to that?
I would suggest we should get it engineered. Obviously, we're going through people's driveways and the slope of driveways and the greater driveways and what have you. That's up to council, but.
Just to speak to that, if you don't do some, you'd end up having a sidewalk going up and down over the different hills, and, or you could decide to get it engineered so it's straight or relatively straight. So if you don't get the engineering, you just go on the lay of the land. But I think, just to be clear, we don't have to have it engineered, but it's a good idea to do that. Counselor Hyatt?
All right, one more question through you. Thank you. When we're doing this type of work, who's the liaison between like the contractors, the engineering, the homeowners? Like, who does the kind of, you know, a homeowner comes out and says, I have a problem? How does that?
I think Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
It would be me. So yeah, there'd be lots of public notice. I mean, obviously it's a, you gotta start survey here shortly because the weather's cooperating and then get going on design. Um, I'm sure the word will get out after this meeting to those affected residents in particular on Maple Street. Um, it's not going to affect too many people on Garfield Street because it's side yards.
Excuse me, Mike, yeah, speak right into the mic, please, so we can hear you.
We'll probably get some traction as far as some questions from residents, but, um, there'll be lots of correspondence and notices and, uh, I don't know, Mandy, maybe a public meeting. I, I'm not, possibly, I'm not sure, but, um, we'll, we'll make sure everybody's aware of what's going on, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Patel.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, directed to Mike. So with that correspondence from the public that is expected, I'm sure that there's also going to be correspondence from those residents that aren't currently on the scheduled repair. At what point is the additional sidewalk repair or any projects going to come forth? Do we have an idea on that?
Through your worship, so repair, like we spot check sidewalks throughout the year. Um, when we replace a panel sidewalk that needs to be replaced, um, we generally don't correspond with any residents. This is in particular need to correspond because we're going through their driveway.
Right.
But as far as repairs go, we don't correspond with the residents.
Okay.
In that area because it's the town sidewalk and it's existing. It's not new. We're just replacing it for, for obvious reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Thompson. And just to remind council, we do have a study that's been completed regarding sidewalks. So we do have a plan on where we're going. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That takes us to Parks and Recreation. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities regarding the YMCA fitness equipment. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to endorse the report of the director of parks, recreation and facilities dated February the 20th, 2024 regarding the quote results for the replacement of fitness equipment at the YMCA Petrolia and that council approve the equipment purchase from FDF Group in the amount of $43,853 plus HST.
Thank you. And again, to remind council, that was the low bid. Uh, there's a big difference between that and the other bids, so I, I'm really pleased with that. Any discussion from council? I'll ask Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That brings us now to the second opportunity for the public to address council. Is there anyone wishing to address council at this time? Please state your name and address.
Uh, yes, uh, my name is Bob Leeper. I live at 2574 Moore Law in, in Moretown. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I've been active in selling real estate in Petrolia for over 25 years. Uh, I've also been the developer for Country View Estates for the last two phases of 59 lots. I have another 129 lots to be serviced in the future. Those, the first two phases were designed to accommodate all 188 lots plus land to the south at no cost to the town. No additional town upgrades were required to the plan. All sewer lift stations, stormwater pond, roads and more were paid by the developer as well as the town's legal engineering costs and staff time. A park was donated as per the draft plan and not only was the land donated, it was graded, leveled and seeded at a cost of approximately $40,000, ready to be used. The Country View subdivision as a whole consists of 160 houses with an average tax per house of around $3,000, that's the town's portion, to Petrolia yearly for a total of $480,000. Over the last 30 years, the subdivision has required ve- very little maintenance, not even repaving. Underground infrastructure due to quality of design, material and engineering is lasting more than 75 years or more. The development charges you propose suggests that the new development is a burden to Petrolia. When the opposite is true, new homes pay the highest level of taxes based on their assessment. Do new homes and subdivisions require more maintenance than the rest? No, if anything, they require less. New development actually subsidizes the other areas of town that need upgrading. If the current tax base covers the town's costs, then new homes reduce the cost and/or provide additional money for their share of the costs. Your development fees want both. You want new home, homeowners to pay the highest tax level for existing costs and more for future costs. A basic examination of these future costs shows a list of overinflated items as well as projects that have not been wanted in the past, that will never be realized in the, in the future and that have already been budgeted for. If these fees are so necessary, why do you need to resort to these tactics? Is it simply to justify an unnecessary tax in a town which already has the highest tax rates in the county? Your development charges range from $7,827 to $10,415. These charges will also be subject to HST and land transfer tax, raising the total from 8,881 to 11,827. This cost will be included in the purchase price and many will be mortgaged. Over the term of a 25-year mortgage, the homeowner will pay $17,000 to $23,000 for these development fees. The town and councilors publicly state that they support and encourage development and that they are committed to affordable housing. I have been told how good its financial condition is and how many millions of dollars in reserves are available. The town is applying for millions in grants to cover the costs of some of these projects that these fees will pay for. The town is also applying for money from the federal and provincial government through new programs designed to help new housing builds. How much money do you have to have before you are satisfied? The more you have, the more you will spend. You are adding higher costs at a time when new housing has stalled throughout the province and certainly more so in Lanton County. I have been selling new homes in Petrolia for over 25 years and this is one of the worst markets I have seen. Interest rates are high and consumer confidence is low. You could not pick a worse time to consider implementing these fees. We have always had a competitive edge in Petrolia by keeping our prices down. Our lot prices have always been priced significantly less and no development fees helped give us an advantage over other locations and we have passed the savings along. We have a nationwide housing crisis and this is a money grab, pure and simple. We ask you to hold off for at least two years. Wait and see how much money you receive from the federal and provincial government. Take a closer look at the projects and items in your future development and are they really needed? Help us get through this stalled housing market. The more homes, the more new homes that are built, the better your finances will be. The benefits and growth and increased tax base far outweigh the one-time fees you propose. The system is not broken. Spend your time and efforts getting developments approved, not penalizing and hindering growth. Thank you for your time.
Just before you go too, I just, I just want to make one correction, Mr. Leapers. We are not the highest taxed municipality.
I, I said we were one of the highest. I didn't say we were the highest.
Thank you. Just so we're clear on that. All right, does council have any questions for Mr. Leaper? Counselor Hyatt.
Uh, thank you through you, your worship, to Mr. Leeper. Uh, thank you. You presented information from, uh, from the development side, but I think there's two sides of the coin, right? So as you mentioned, your, your address is in Moretown, so you'd be a, a resident of St. Clair Township.
Yes.
Um, so in 2021, they passed the DC bylaw. I'm just wondering from a resident's side, did you go and object to the DC bylaw in St. Clair Township?
I live in the country and, um, while we're even subject to, um, uh, development charges, I'm not a developer in Moretown, so, um, and I, I have spent most of my, um, business in, most of my career selling real estate in Petrolia and the area and been involved with new housing and particularly Country View, uh, for over 25 years. So this is where it affects me directly and the people I deal with. When I'm talking to new homeowners that are potentially looking at building and I tell them about this charge, they can't believe it. Most don't know about it. That's, that's the way it goes. There's very few people to object, that object to this because they're not aware of it and who, and except for somebody building a new house, who cares? That's the general, that's the general, um, uh, and just because you can doesn't mean you should.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Counsel O'Hara.
I, I have some comments. Do you want me to bring it up when the bylaw is read or bring it up now?
Well, you can bring it up now. You can, so go ahead.
Okay, well, I, uh, Mr. Leeper brings up some good points. Um, you know, it, it is bad timing for sure. I would certainly like to see this deferred at least until 2025 and, uh, take another look at it then. Maybe we'll be booming in town then. I'll be surprised if we are, but, uh, you never know. And you know, in Petrolia, we've always been tried, we've always tried hard to, to encourage people to move to Petrolia, buy a house here. We have a, a playhouse that does really well and we put lots of money into promotion. We put a lot of money into, uh, all the functions that go on in the parks and different things. And this seems to me by passing this is 180 degrees, that we, we're really saying we're going to tax you even more for a new house. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counsel O'Hara. And I think for those present, so everyone's clear, if this bylaw is approved tonight, the, will not go into effect until August the 1st. I just want to make that clear. Any other questions from council? Counsel Patel.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, I've listened to a lot of information on both sides and tried to do as much research as I can. I too, um, feel as though timing's bad. Um, I, I would love to see what other options. We've had such a great report card for grants. Um, there's more things coming from the federal government all the time. Um, it all doesn't trickle down on our municipality. I understand that, but, um, I, I really, um, have grave concerns whether this is the best time to do that and I haven't had enough research or feedback to convince me otherwise. To be completely honest, um, I would really like to see us wait, um, and use the successful grant applications we've had to, to help with the funding needed.
Thank you, Counsel Patel. Oh, no, go ahead, sure. You want to respond?
Um, I can assure you, it is not a good time. This, this is my livelihood. I represent Spectre Construction, who is sitting on four model homes, extremely well-priced, very competitively and very well-built. He's sitting on millions of dollars. He's doing that for his behalf. He's doing that for the town's behalf. And here, you're thinking, let's, let's charge more money. And it's not a good time.
All right, I think I'll stop it there. The council can debate that the rest of, when we have the bylaw before us. Mr. Leeper, thank you for coming to address council. I'm going to bring that forward, that'd be great. Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move on. We have new and unfinished business. We do have a notice of motion from Counselor Hyatt. Council does have some choices. If you wished to deal with it tonight, you can with a motion of two-thirds of council and we can deal with it, or it'll just come to the next meeting of council. So I'm asking, what are your wishes? Deputy Mayor Field.
I would, I would bring it forward and ask for a second here to.
All right.
Try to get two-thirds.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any questions from council regarding that motion? And that is just so we can deal with it tonight. Okay, and I'll need two-thirds. All those in favor of dealing with this tonight? Opposed? That motion carries, so we will deal with this tonight. I'll ask the, uh, for a motion to put that on the floor for further discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Wells. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. And that is whereas a member of council has a standing conflict through their employer that prevents them from participating during, during a council meeting for discussion around the financial accounts listing as a whole. And whereas during the January 15th, 2024 council meeting, I raise this concern with consideration that the accounts were separated out into two listings to enable a member of council to declare conflict on the single account listing, enabling them the ability to participate in discussions surrounding all other accounts as a single declared item should not preclude from an ability to participate in the other accounts listed where not, where no conflict is had. And whereas members of the council are able to provide the Treasury Department with advanced notification of a regular vendor listed, vendor listed for payment where they have a pecuniary interest to declare, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Petrolia direct the deputy treasurer that going forward, the financial accounts listings shall be separated for consideration to A, accounts specific to the vendor in which a counselor has had a continued pecuniary interest and B, financial accounts in general.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions regarding that motion before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That will take us to the bylaws and what we will do is I'm going to deal with all the bylaws of first and second reading. On the third reading, I will pull out the developer bylaw and we'll deal with that separately. So I'd like a motion to have the bylaws read a first and second time and that includes the additional bylaw regarding 233, I believe, Eureka Street.
320.
Pardon me?
320.
Oh, three, oh, sorry, 322, thank you. So that is for, um, all of them, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 and 16. So I'll need a motion, motion to Counsel Wells, seconded by Counsel Patel. If we don't read that, all those in favor of approving the two readings? That motion carries. That'll go to our third reading and I'll ask for council for a motion to approve the third reading for, uh, bylaws 12, 13, 14, 15 and 16 and we will deal with 11, the development charges separately. So I'll need a motion to have the bylaws read a third time. Moved by Counsel Hyatt.
Do I have a quick question?
Well, we haven't got it on the floor yet. I need a second at first.
You've already read it.
Seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I was wondering if we can pull 16 out to potentially allow for more time to review.
Um, you can if council agrees with that. Does council want to delay the rezoning?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What, um, through your worship, uh, what impact does that have on the moving this development forward?
Well, that would certainly, that'll just slow up probably the process because they have to do notice of the passing. I don't know, uh, Mrs. Pearson, would you like to speak to that?
Um, I, I certainly can, your worship, if there's something specific to the bylaw, it is through the Planning Act. So if there is something specific in the bylaw that council would like to pass forward to planning, um, to be reflective in the bylaw, then absolutely we're able to do so. Uh, it is based on the public meeting from, um, earlier this month. Um, and then once, um, if direction was provided back to the planning department, there certainly we can take that back. Um, and then, uh, in speaking to the process, once the bylaw is passed, it does go for notice of passing and then is subject to an appeal period.
But I certainly want to make it clear, it will hold things up if we do that.
Yeah, I personally just didn't have time to review it because it was issued at, after the rest of the agenda, so that's why I'm requesting, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay, um, we could probably go back, probably should get a motion if we're going to do that. I know we had a motion on the floor for the third readings. Uh, do I, I think I'll hold that. If you want to make a motion to hold bylaw 16, uh, I'll get it, I'll need to get a second and we'll have to vote on that. So you're going to move that we hold the zoning bylaw, seconded by Counselor Wells. Any discussion from council? Counsel O'Hara.
Through your worship, I, I hate holding developers up if everything is in place and this is going to be a delay for sure, so I think we should think of, about that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, any other discussion from council? I will not support this. Okay, all those in favor of, of pulling bylaw number 16 out and, uh, having it go to our next meeting? Opposed? And I'm opposed, so I'm sorry, it will run. So we now have a motion, I believe, on the floor, Mrs. Pearson?
We can return to third and final reading.
Okay, and that includes all of them except for the 322 Eureka, or sorry, all except for the development charges. Okay, any discussion on having the other bylaws read a third time? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll deal with the development charge separately, and I'll ask for a move and a second to have that bylaw read a third time, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
Can I ask for a recorded vote?
You certainly can. And so then Counselor Field has requested a recorded vote. I'll ask for a move and a second to put the motion on the floor for discussion.
Move, can, can we make an amendment to that now?
Here you can, but we'll just get the motion on the floor, then you can amend it. Okay, I'll need a motion to put it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I will ask the clerk to read that, and then we can decide whether you want an amendment or not.
Thank you, your worship. That would be, okay, that would be for bylaw number 11 of 2024, being a bylaw, the incorporation of the Town of Petrolia for the imposition of development charges be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you. Now I'll open it up for discussion or amendment if necessary. Counselor O'Hara?
I'd like to amend it, that it be deferred until 2025.
Okay, I'll need a second for that amendment. Seconded by Counselor Patel.
Sorry, your worship, I just need a second to draft that into here.
Deputy Mayor Field, the recorded vote, do you just want that on the main motion or?
On the main motion.
While she's getting prepared, so what we will do is we will vote on just the amendment first.
And when was that date, your Counselor? Sorry, Counselor O'Hara, when would that date?
Oh, 2025.
Just, just, just January 1st? Okay. And so that motion would be that the third and final reading be deferred to January 1st, 2025?
Okay, so we're just voting on the amendment. All those in favor of approving the amendment? Those opposed? That's not carrying. All right, now we'll go back to the original motion to approve the third reading of the development charges, and do we have a move and a second on that, Mrs. Pearson?
Let's get back to the bottom of my screen. Yes, we have that it was moved by Counselor Hyatt and seconded by Counselor Clark.
Okay, so I'll open that up now for discussion regarding that bylaw. Any discussion from Council? Counselor Welsh?
Just some comments.
That's okay, go ahead.
Hi to you, I have listened to the developers. I've talked to developers in other communities that do in fact already have DCs in place. I have read papers, I've listened to podcasts, I have looked at other similar municipalities, both for and against and in between. And this is not a municipal tax grab. We're doing infrastructure, we're building long-term infrastructure for the residents of Petrolia that will outlast all of us, yes, thank goodness.
Excuse me, Counselor Welsh, you'll refer that through me as the chair.
We do, we do have to serve all of the residents of Petrolia, all of them, now and in the future. We have to make long-term plans. DCs stabilize the tax rates, they stabilize water and wastewater rates, and they are an essential part of our asset management plan. The DC legislation is very prescribed, and our DC bylaw has been even further tailored to our own specific needs and what the community needs. What else do I have here? If this had been in place since 2019, 2020, we would have had a lot of money for infrastructure that we've gone out looking for, had to fund through tax dollars or water rates and sewer rates. And it, in my opinion, this is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Counselor Welsh. Anyone else have anything you'd like? Counselor O'Hara?
Just a comment, your worship, you know, Counselor Welsh says it's not a, a tax. Well, it looks more like a tax than a birthday present to me.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. Any other comments from Council? Before we call the recorded vote, I do have a statement I'd like to read, and I want to just state, I've been torn on this bylaw, and I've been against development charges or at one time those called impost fees for years and believe it has helped encourage development in Petrolia. However, I feel that the taxpayers should not have to pay the full cost due to development, but should be shared by both the town and developers. I feel with the reduced development fees that now is the time to start. I also could only support the bylaw provided it gave the developers fair notice up until at least August the 1st, 2024 to go into effect. This will also allow time to see if the town receives another grant that could possibly reduce the amount of development fees even more. And I'll ask Mrs. Pearson for the recorded vote, please.
Thank you, your worship. So just a reminder for Council, the recorded vote, the member of Council who requested the recorded vote goes second last, the mayor votes last, everybody else is in alphabetical order. Okay, so we start with Counselor Clark. For or against?
For.
Counselor Hyatt, for or against?
For.
Counselor O'Hara, for or against? Counselor Patel, for or against?
Against.
Counselor Welsh, for or against?
For.
Deputy Mayor Field, for or against?
For.
Mayor Lucely, for or against?
For.
That motion carries, your worship, five to two.
Okay, thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn would be in order until March the 25th. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And to the general public, thank you for attending.